October 21st, meeting of the Boyle County Board of Adjustments. Call the meeting to order and the first order of business is to approve the meetings, the minutes from the September 16th meeting.
I'm of approval.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, she carries. We've got two public hearings on the docket this evening. Everybody that here that wants to turn to speak will be given the opportunity. I asked public input to limit your comments to three minutes or less. And we will get started with David and Kaylee Waterhouse's Casa at Center Street LLC. Hannah's going to give us staff report.
Maybe. One second. Oh, wait, hold on. Now it's, okay, we're good. There we go, that on button right there. All right, so yes, David and Kaylee Walterhouse have applied for a conditional use permit for the operation of a short-term rental located at 140 St. Mildred's Court. The property is currently zoned RM2, so it's very close to here. And so this is just kind of showing you RM2 and the surrounding area is institutional and single-family. So it's on St. Mildred's Court in West Main Street. And then this is applicant's picture showing parking, adequate parking on the driveway. And so this is the request, the conditional use permit being requested is to provide a short-term rental with benefits to local tourism, supporting small local businesses, and supporting housing for Center College parents. And this is in my staff report that you'll have it at your hand, but the proposed short-term rental is located on St. Mildred's Court, which is a historically significant neighborhood within downtown Danville and near Center College. The applicant's stated intent of the CUP is to benefit local tourism and local businesses, but the application does not include a business plan or any measurable strategies to achieve those outcomes. And if the CUP is based on economic and community benefit, then the applicant should demonstrate how the proposed conditional use would actively contribute to those goals. Additionally, staff observed that the applicant's property is already listed and advertised on Airbnb. And because the applicant is promoting the short-term rental before receiving approval from the Board of Adjustments and before any conditions have been formally imposed, staff believes that this goes against Section 5.2.4 of the Specific Use Standards, which states a change of use zoning permit is required prior to commencement of the business. And all short-term rental establishments shall be required to list the facility zoning permit assigned by the Planning Commission on all advertisements and all home-sharing platforms. And additionally, if you want to hear more concerns, I have them, but I think this alone disqualifies the application. But I'm open to going on with my other concerns. Additionally, I think we are at capacity for the area, so I don't think there needs to be more short-term rentals. And the neighborhood that it's in is historically relevant, and so enough short-term rentals will move the use of that neighborhood. So I just think we have a lot of concerns. And this is just kind of the use regulations. You can clearly see that the conditional use permit for short-term rentals in the Danville area has specific use standards, and again, that is the specific use standard. You need approval by the board before commencing business, and if it's listed on Airbnb, that is commencing business. And I was also made aware that it was being used this past weekend, so. Again, just our specific use standards, and that is per advertisement on Airbnb. You can also see that is a 30-night minimum, which goes against our ordinance as well because all short-term rentals are less than 30 nights. And then this is the general area. Because per ordinances, we have to show the surrounding area. Again, I believe there is enough Airbnbs in this area, in the downtown area, catering to Center College students and parents. And that $2,900 one is hers. And again, this is just the weekend prices. I just think we're over saturated with Airbnbs in this area. And these are the conditions of approval. And the review criteria and findings required. All of the highlighted portions, I think, should be reasons for denying the application.
Any read of input on the house already being listed?
A couple of notes on that. If this were a variance application, there's specific statutory language that says if a variance arises from willful violation of zoning ordinance, no variance shall be granted. It's mandatory. It's not the same mandatory restriction on conditional use permits. I think you can hear the application, you can consider it, but I think infractions are something you can consider when deciding on it. And then furthermore, my read of the 30 days was perhaps that was an effort to not have a short-term rental before being permitted. But the applicant could speak to that, but I think you can hear it.
Absolutely. Would the applicant care to come up and state your name, residence, and attest that the testimony is truthful?
Yes, good evening. David Walterhouse, I'm from Lancaster, Kentucky. So yes, so in fact, the reason why it's listed for 30 days is to remain in compliance because it's listed as a short-term if it's 29 days. So that was in fact the reason. There were residents there this last weekend because they were there actually for 35 days. So it has been rented as a long-term rental in compliance with the zoning for, I believe it's RM2, so that it distinguishes the 29 or the 30 days. So this would be in fact, the application is to extend it to go down to 29 days so that we can in fact use it to utilize as a short-term rental. I would guess the, what I would say in argument to the need for that. So we actually are running another Airbnb on Grant Street. We've been doing that now for over two and a half years. We have over 100 five-star reviews. I would say 90% of our demographic is Center College parents. So because of that great need, it's forcing us to basically pick and choose weekends that we can give to families, so that's driving the need for another home. So we invested in that property specifically with the intent of growing that business for Center College families. I mean, we have families that continue to ask, can you provide these weekends for us to come and be with our kids? With the addition of the pool there at Center, we've seen a huge increased demand of families just coming for swimming events, for those types of things. So it's really to support what we've seen just personally, more families wanting to come to the area and a desire and need for that.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. Anybody here to?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Mr. Walterhouse, the zoning director raised a question about how your permitted use for small businesses, if you could speak to that.
Say that again.
There's a question in the staff report about, you know, you mentioned that your conditional use permit, your short-term rental, will be a boon to small businesses in the area, but there was no elaboration on that. Would you care to speak to that?
Sure. So I mean, I can directly speak to, you know, residents that we have. So every family that we come is obviously staying there at our residence that we currently have on Grant Street. The same would be true with Mildred's. So I mean, the individuals that were there for the last 30 days, they were actually doing a construction project over at the Kentucky School for the deaf. So I mean, most of what we see come in is either kind of short-term potential like that, but it's all community development. We also advertise at all the local businesses here, so the restaurants, you know, I'm thinking Daniel's Poke, the Dry Stack. So those are places that we advertise not only in the home, but then also that likewise they would also advertise our homes as well. So I mean, it's, that's what we see it. It's kind of an intern advertisement for local business. I mean, if you go into any, our house on Grant Street, you know, it's, we have all the local brochures for everybody that's local. So I mean, and even as people are coming to stay, we'll give them recommendations for where they should go locally, events that are coming up because we obviously attend all those as well.
Okay, it's the chair's prerogative, but I think you'll have a chance to speak in response to any public comment that comes in.
I've got, I got a question. So about what you're saying, in terms of the fact that you're only going to rent to those people that's under those two conditions?
So what, two conditions? So?
As far as here on business or to Center College families? What if anybody just comes and says, we just want a place to stay, just for a weekend?
So there's, so there is a vetting process, obviously, through VRBO and Airbnb, so every person that we have is, they've either stayed somewhere before, so you have a review of who they are, plus they have to submit identification, a social security number, all of that stuff. So there's a background check that's done through those platforms before we rent to them. Obviously, we are not going to rent to anybody that's going to cause any damage to the house because those are our homes, like we want to maintain them. So in the two and a half years we've been doing it, we haven't had any incidents. I mean, I can, out of the people that, 90% of the folks that are coming in are return guests coming for softball games, football games, lacrosse games, homecoming. I mean, the comments that we get are please don't sell this while our children are in school. So I mean, that's continually the feedback that we get. So most of these people will literally go, go home and book it for the entire school year. So we've seen that continually. But I mean, the other people that we see are, you know, people that are from here historically, coming back to be with family over holidays or intent to move back to the area. So I mean, it's, it's fully intended with a use for the public good. I mean, there's not a, we're not seeing anything negative out of any of the guests that we've ever hosted.
I guess I was making clear, suppose I just call and say I want to get this place for Thanksgiving dinner, family dinner, and stuff like it.
So we have, so they're specific to the policies that we have written for the home, so there's no parties or anything like that obviously allowed. We have had a few instances where people have wanted to have like a family dinner, so they've actually reached out and asked us, hey, we want to have 10 people over for dinner, can we have our family that's here locally come over for dinner? So we have had that, I'd say, one or two times where they've had a number of people come for dinner and then that's, that's extended.
That is allowed.
Correct, yeah. But there is a limitation for how many people can spend the night. So you, and there's, there's night hours, so that's obviously included in there, so nothing past 10:00 p.m. So that's where the cutoff is for that as well. So that's clearly laid out in our, our policies as well.
What's the capacity?
For this one, it's six, six people. So there's three bedrooms, so that's the max capacity.
So if I may, so what's the, why get the short-term rental permit? Why get the conditional use permit if you're already renting it out long-term, longer than 30 days?
So yeah, when you go over 30 days, most people don't have an interest in over 30 days. So we have had a number of parents that have wanted to book it out basically for graduation months already, but the, they don't want to do that throughout, you know, the down months of November, December, January. They don't want to rent out for 30 days when there's nothing going on. So that's, that's what we're running into. And basically, it would be an unsustainable business if we can't do it for 29 days. So if we don't get a short-term use, we, it's an unsustainable business for us.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here this evening to speak for the applicant, in support of the applicant? Anybody here speaking against the application? Please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Heather Pennington, and I live next door to the applicant property at 146 St. Mildred's Court, along with my husband Vince and three teenagers, Henry, Ellie, and Abby. And I'm here tonight to present the neighborhood's petition objecting to this application to allow 140 St. Mildred's Court to operate as a short-term rental. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to review your packet, but we have a petition that has over 40 signatures as of right now. All of us objecting probably for many and varied individual reasons, so I will be brief and keep to my three minutes and address the main reasons that my family objects to this application. And the first of those and most important is, is that St. Mildred's Court is not only an historically significant neighborhood, as recognized by Mrs. Gray, and it is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places, but St. Mildred's Court is a long-term residential neighborhood. And I think that this is a very important distinction to make in tonight's discussion. It is very different from Grant Street, where the applicant has his other Airbnb property, because tenure on St. Mildred's Court is often measured in decades, not merely by months or years or weekends. By my count, there are over 10 houses that have been occupied by the same family for more than 20 years. And when I first moved to St. Mildred's Court back in 1998, there were multiple families that had lived in the same house on the street for over 50 years. And because the residents of St. Mildred's Court stay in their homes for such a long time, we know our neighbors well, and we value the strong sense of community that we have with each other. To allow 140 St. Mildred's Court to become an Airbnb with transient occupants, however well-vetted they may be, and Center parents are lovely people, would adversely affect the neighborhood's original purpose and character as a residential neighborhood. Because I am next door to 140, I do have a question about whether or not the home has been occupied for 35 days prior to this past weekend. I hadn't really seen anyone, so I hate to cast any shade, but that was not what I have observed. And then my family's second primary objection to this application is related to the traffic concerns. St. Mildred's Court is the only street in this city with two-way traffic, on-street parking on both sides, and a very sharp curve in the middle of the street. Furthermore, St. Mildred's Court is a very popular cut-through to avoid the red lights at Main and Maple and at Lexington and Maple. And any increase in on-street parking would be burdensome to the street and dangerous to the public, especially if cars park in the designated no-parking, yellow line curved part of the street, which unfortunately, we noted that one of the visitors or residents of 140 St. Mildred's Court did just this very past weekend. So in closing, I'd like to request that the board deny the permit because a short-term rental at 140 St. Mildred's Court would adversely affect the character of the street and disrupt the quality of life for our residents. Short-term rentals are simply not in keeping with the original purpose and character of our neighborhood.
Anybody else like to take the opportunity to speak in opposition? Would you like any chance to rebut the comments, sir?
Would you allow all the neighbors of St. Mildred's Court to stand up?
Certainly. Thank you all.
Obviously, I can understand the original intent for what the neighborhood is for. And what I would say to that specifically, obviously, our intent is to own this home long-term. So it's, it's our intent to eventually obviously reside in this home ourselves. The guests that we host here, we want to show the best of Danville, so I think that what you have just specifically highlighted is, is a highlight of that neighborhood. So, and I can attest to the guests that we have on Grant Street even too, they love the neighborhood, they love the people. So the neighborhood and the people of Danville itself are a highlight, and to say that it's going to devalue your property and the, you know, the long-term community, I think you guys, you guys are the neighborhood. So I mean, the house itself, while historic, the people are what make the neighborhood. So I don't want to, obviously, we're not going to come in here and be combative about this, you know, we did this with the intent of it being a business, and we live in this community. We've been in Danville, that's why we moved here. So we moved from out of state to Danville as part of, to be part of this community. So that's, that's my petition to you. You know, I can applaud you, you guys live in that neighborhood, and I can understand why you are here, and then, believe me, I want to preserve that.
I do have a follow-up question to that.
Yes.
But your, your address is Lancaster.
Correct. We, we moved, when we first moved in, we moved to Grant Street. So we've, we actually were unable to sell that house, which started us down the Airbnb journey, and it was so successful that we moved on to another house.
So do you still reside in Lancaster?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. So that closes the public input portion, and time for us to come together as a board and decide what to do here. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say, what he said was?
If you have comments, please come to the microphone. Just for the record, state your name and address and?
Diane Mashaka, 153 St. Mildred's Court. And everything Heather said, we agree with, she did a very nice presentation, but she said one thing, it is a residential, it is not a business area, and it's a wonderful residential street, and we hope to keep it that way.
Thank you, ma'am. That will conclude the public input portion. Thank you.
I've got a question. I'm familiar with that area. The property, if you're coming in off of Lexington Avenue, you take a left on the St. Mildred's Court, going towards Main Street, on the left side, is that a residential home right there? Because I know some people's, used to rent that after, that was real property. So is that a long-term, or is that?
I can't speak to every single parcel, but I know there are some up towards Main Street, there are some houses that?
Center, Center College.
Yeah, so Center College has some more towards Main Street, but that, more towards 140 is all residential. Yeah.
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes, what?
The answer is yes, it was prior, it was previously a long-term, correct.
So there is a long-term rental property already there, is that what, is that what I'm saying?
I can't speak to every single parcel, but I don't know.
Which ones do you want to know about?
I think it's the one on the left, going towards Main Street. It'd be on the left.
The one on the corner of St. Mildred's and Lexington?
Yeah, I think so, I think the one that, it sits right beside where the dean probably used to live at. It's, it's probably the last one on the left side, going towards Main Street.
Oh, oh, Center owns that, no, the college owns that. They house dignitaries and guest speakers in that stone cottage, right?
Okay, the guest house.
It's not a family living there, is it?
No, no, sir. Center, the college owns, oh, let's see, maybe the first three properties on that side, three properties.
Heather, would you come to the microphone, please, for comments?
Sorry. Yes, so Center owns 122, 124, and I'm not sure if it's 128 or 130, what the house number is. So they own those pieces of property, starting 122 being that stone cottage that's on the intersection, Main Street and St. Mildred's.
It's on the right side, right?
If, if?
Going towards Main Street. If your car is going towards Main Street?
No, if you're going towards Main Street, that's on the left. There is an empty lot that is, so there's the dean's, if you're, if you're going towards Main Street, on the, on the right, there's the dean's house and their backyard. It's brick, it's brick. And like, there's a parking lot behind that. And so then the next house is 129, and that was a private residence until Center, well, Center had a right of first refusal because that was the registrar at Center had lived at that house, Tim Colehang. So that's 129. And then Center owns 131, that's a guest cottage. And then 137 is a student housing. Maybe, yeah, yeah, it's got the, yes, sir.
Ms. Pennington, while you're up, I wanted to ask a follow-up. I heard you say that this is a use that doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. I wonder if you could just spell that out a little bit, please?
Sure. I mean, I think that the character of, of the neighborhood is for long-term residents. You know, the people who move there, buy their homes, and they own their homes and care for them like an owner does.
And what will be different about, you know, month-to-month Center parents being there?
Sure. Well, it's, it's someone who doesn't live there. I mean, you know, they're, they're very small, kind of nitpicky concerns, but, but I can, can speak to, you know, the property was occupied this past weekend, and, you know, there were people enjoying themselves, having a good time, but I understood that it kept the neighbors on the other side awake. And, you know, another very small issue, but, but sort of telling of the, of the difference between a resident and a short-term occupant is that the, the property was cleaned, I think, by the Walterhouses yesterday, after the house had been occupied for the weekend for Center's homecoming. And there was a very full trash can pulled to the curb. Well, the trash on St. Mildred's Court isn't picked up until Friday, so when you pull your trash out to the curb on a Monday night, it's going to sit there, and that's not typical for the neighborhood. So, I mean, those are very small things, but the bigger point, and I think maybe what you're kind of going towards, is the character of the neighborhood is the neighbors know each other. So if you take a piece of property off the market for long-term residents, you're taking a house away from the neighborhood and the sense of community that we have built and continue to build year after year, and even on our particular street, decade after decade. So that's the character of the neighborhood. It's long-term residential use, not a business. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that Center owns?
I'm so sorry, is your microphone?
Thought it was on, but I guess it was not. I turned it off. You said that Center owns a couple of houses there?
They do.
At the end, and what do they do with those houses?
So two of them house students. One of them is a guest cottage that they use for dignitaries that are, well, maybe I guess two are dignitaries. One of them, I think, is housing a professor, and I think?
So are those long-term, or do they host those on a short-term basis as well?
Well, the students are there for the Well, the students are there for the year. And, you know, the people that they house in the guest cottage are not there long-term. You're correct. However, those are all located at one end of the street, and they are owned by Center College, who is a long-term property owner.
I get it, but that particular property, if they're letting them in there short-term, it is, in essence, a short-term...
The difference being, if you allow me, Center is making the full-out effort to put no more than what our definition of family is. So, it's still a single-family residential unit.
I hear you.
Because even though it's students, you understand what I mean?
That's not the one we're talking about.
I also believe that for that dignitary one, I think it's semester. Like, I think there it's like a guest lecturer or a guest teacher or whatever. So, I don't, I don't know. Again, I'm not Center College, but...
Yeah, I'm...
Same. I'm just trying to clarify.
But I think it is longer than the 30 days.
It's kind of hard to let Center College do it, just because it's Center.
But I think it's longer than the 30 days.
It's relevant to this board.
I do, so, but I don't know. I can't, I can't say for sure.
Yeah. I can't, I can't speak for the college and answer that question. I can say, as a resident, it makes a tremendous difference that it is all located at one end of the street, rather than right smack dab in the middle. So, I, you know, that's...
Senator, my head, so, yes, college is actually on Main.
That's true. Yes, that's true.
He was, he was kind of going to my direction. So, I'll ask this question. Suppose that he decides to rent it to Center students? Wouldn't that be the same thing, though? I mean, if he decides to use this property and say, "I'm just only going to rent to Center students to come in for the year," he's still doing, he's still doing it.
Then he wouldn't need a short-term rental.
Huh?
Then he wouldn't need a conditional use permit.
Good point.
Do you all have anything else?
Steve?
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Mr. Walter House, you said that you have another Airbnb already in Danville? Did you get the appropriate permit for that one?
Yes, sir.
Can you say why you didn't get a permit for this one?
That's what I'm seeking.
Yeah, but you're seeking it after the fact.
So, it's not listed for short-term at the moment. So, the city defines short-term as 29 days or less. It's currently listed for longer than 30 days.
As an Airbnb?
But it's a long-term. Correct. I'm just using that platform to advertise for it as a rental. It's not listed. So, the city defines short-term as 29 days. It's listed for 30 days or longer.
So, the residents that were there this past weekend have been there for 30 days?
Correct. It was a 33, 32, I could pull it up on my phone. I can show you how long they were there.
They rented it for that much. It doesn't mean they were confined to that house for that long.
Yeah, they were in and out. So, they, because, yeah, they were in and out. So...
All right, thank you. No further questions? Anybody like to entertain a motion one way or the other?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for a short-term rental facility located at 140 St. Mildred's Court with the following conditions: The use is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare in the zone in which it is proposed. The use will not contribute toward an overburdening of public infrastructure and/or services. The use will not result in increased traffic congestion, additional parking problems, substantial increase in population density, environmental problems, or constitute a nuisance. And that otherwise, that the use otherwise meets the requirements for zoning ordinance.
Any further conditions?
I think maybe we need to limit the amount of people that are there, as far as the amount of vehicles were there. But that is to be discussed among the board if it is passed. But that's the only, only issue that I would see.
Mr. Walter House, are there three parking spots off-street?
Yes, you can fit five vehicles coming your way off-street.
I would recommend, I would recommend...
There's a, there's two parts.
You couldn't even go down the street this weekend. They were parked wall-to-wall down the street.
I would, I would just say, too, so, to be, and to be fair, I think that we need to also have the city go back and paint the line on the curb there. So, because even when we were first, when we first purchased the home, it wasn't clear to me that I couldn't be parked there. So, that was, I think...
I can see it.
I understand, I understand. So, and we make that very clear, so, and when people go to check in, we make it very clear that they can't park down the street. And if there are, and please, after this, too, I will give you my number, so that if there is anything, you can reach out to me directly. But I would say to that, the city needs to go back to clearly paint the curb there so it's very clear, because right now, it's very clear.
I would recommend if, on those conditions, there would be no street parking, if, with your conditions. But I want to reiterate, I firmly...
Discuss parking or streaming or...
Yeah.
Or...
That's the conditions, I mean, that's, it would be conditions of the conditional use. But I want to reiterate, I firmly think this application should be denied for several reasons. First and foremost, because she, they commenced business prior to approval, period. I think that is the only reason, like, I think that it should stop there.
Mr. Chair, I think I stepped a little bit out of line here procedurally, where we have a motion, no second. I was asking questions to the applicant. But while the motion is pending, before there's a second, I do want to ask Mr. Baker if he might add a justification, where the board has to make a finding about the number of nearby short-term rentals, to make a finding that there is not an oversaturation of those in the area, that by the applicant's testimony, there is great demand for housing for Center College parents. And that also offers justification of what public need this property will serve.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody care to second that? No?
Mr.?
The second? Just one second. It dies without a second.
It'll die without a second.
Sorry, we're being told that you can't, they can't hear you on the video.
Yeah, the motion would die without a second. Be none. Anybody care to make a different motion?
I make the motion to deny the property being used as a rental property, or Airbnb or whatever it was, short-term.
I'll second that.
Henry.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McGuire, Mr. Brown, we have review criteria for these conditional use permits. I think your motion could be justified by saying that the proposed use is not consistent with the zone's intent statement. The intent statement for the RM2 talks about providing housing opportunities, whereas using housing for short-term rentals does not serve the goal of providing housing opportunities in terms of long-term housing. Furthermore, we heard testimony from neighbors that this will not be a compatible use with the surrounding uses, a neighborhood that's predominantly long-term residential, and those long-term residential uses are characterized by a certain treatment of and respect for their properties. Does that go along with your reasoning?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four to one. Thank you all. Moving on, the next applicant is Christopher Candace Young. They asked for a variance at 502 Dogwood Drive. Hannah?
All right, so, the applicant is requesting a 20-foot variance to reduce the required front setback from 40 feet to 20 feet along East Lexington Ave, in a single-family zoning district. And you can see it's off East Lexington Ave and Dogwood Drive.
Hang on just a second.
Okay.
Would you have some missionaries there to understand?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so you can see it's on East Lexington Ave and Dogwood Drive, which is still quite close to here. It's 502 Dogwood Drive, to be specific. And kind of a little bit about the history. It's R1A, surrounded by RM2, and you can kind of see on the right side the Google images. But the required setbacks for this parcel are determined by the most recently recorded plat. And because this is a historic plat, the setback standards outlined in Section 4.4.4B and 4.4.4E of the zoning ordinance do not apply. If the updated zoning ordinances were applied, the variance request would be for a five-foot reduction, rather than a 20-foot reduction. So, all of that to say, this is historical plat. The last, the last plat recorded is this plat. And so, you can see on this plat, it requires a 40-foot front setback on Lexington Ave and a 50-foot setback on Dogwood. And this lot is also interesting because it's a corner lot, so it has two frontages. So, East Lexington Ave is considered past Kentucky Ave, a state road. So, they have to consider Lexington Ave as a frontage and Dogwood as a frontage. So, it just makes it very hard, considering where the house is set on the lot, to actually abide by the setbacks at all. I think the house is even within that 40-foot, almost. So, that's just a little history. This is the request. Owner will move accessory building to requested variance perimeters 20 feet. A privacy fence will be erected to buffer and assist in concealing lower portions of the building. Privacy fence will be installed around three visible points of East Lexington Ave that currently fall within the restricted 40-foot setback. Landscaping will be completed in a manner consistent with the current landscaping. And these are the zoning ordinances. But again, these don't apply because it's a historical plat. But this just kind of basically spells out what I was just saying. If the up-to-date ordinance is applied, he would only be requesting a five-foot setback. And if East Lexington Ave was considered a side yard, which it is, he wouldn't even need a variance. And so, these are R1A setbacks, front yard 25 feet, side yard 10 feet. So, again, he wouldn't need this otherwise, or other than, like, having the historical plat. I have no concerns. But these are just some exhibits from the applicant, but I think he may want to speak to some of it, if you want me to just, like, flow through it. So, that's all I've got.
The only question I've got right off the good go is, how close is it to the road right now? How much? So, you're talking about turning it 90 degrees on...
No, I just want, there's a diagram that shows how far over, that it will be right now, the rear corner is approximately 18 feet.
I'm sorry, will you...
Please come to the microphone.
And also, you have those exhibits in your, in your...
I was looking for them. There it is.
Shoot, staff report. It's at the back end, yeah.
Yes, sorry. So, right now, it is in line with the house. And I've provided diagrams that you'll see later on that shows that I need to move it over about five feet to be in compliance with the parameters that I'm requesting now. Right as it sits at this moment, the back rear portion is approximately 18 feet from the road, and the front is approximately 16 feet from the road. So, I'm not saying that it has to stay where it is right now, because through time, we've decided that we would like to erect a privacy fence around it, and I would like a buffer around that. So, I'm requesting it to be moved 20-foot over, and that'll allow approximately a five-foot buffer between my building and my privacy fence. If you look up into the top-right corner of this diagram, that is where the proposed building location is, and the blue outline is where the privacy fence will be placed. I've already got a deposit down on this fence, and it will be a beautiful privacy fence, which I've also provided an example of. And the green is going to be a steel, black steel ornamental-style fence, like kind of the Kentucky School for the Death has, but four foot in compliance with everything. Yes, so, backyard comparison, if you look at my yard, I have a very large front yard. In this area, sewer line runs through. If you look at the white image that is on the backyard comparison, that is a sewer line, which is why my house sits back so far in comparison to that of the rest of the neighborhood. In turn, it greatly reduces the amount of backyard I actually have. And I would have never foreseen that I would have that far of a setback off of that road. And when I bought the house, my intentions were always to be able to utilize that area of the side for additional space, just because the grass area is so restricted. Because even down my driveway, you can see it's paved, and then on around the back, it is also paved, up to about where, you can't really see it there. But there'll be another image that maybe we'll show that later. Well, yeah, okay, that bottom image of the, sorry, Heather, the bottom image where you see the playset, that, where you see the pillar, is about where the concrete area quits. So, right now, that is the area that I have to do anything in. That area in particular is also a very unique area, because we have an excessive amount of drainage that comes through that area, also because of the concrete, and because it is downhill, because the rest, the neighborhood comes up slightly. So, if I, if I'm forced to put a building there, not only will it be required to sit up higher than it already is, because of the nature of the building needing to be level, it could also further cause more erosion and other issues, and also, just in my opinion, clutter the back, the already confined backyard. And then, let's see, if you go over to the right, I've just got more examples. The playset, so if I'm forced to move the building over, it's going to have to sit where the playset is, and that would force me to have to move my playset closer to the road, which is far from ideal, because people do speed, and, you know, we've had people, we lost the 25 mile-per-hour sign after somebody crashed into it in my front yard, you know? So, it's concerning to me that I would have to be forced to put my children closer, when I could use the building itself as a physical protector for them, in addition to the fence. The two images to the right are just the proposed fencing. Like I said, I've already got a deposit down, and I'm waiting for this to conclude before I move forward, which the proposed fence style in question for the privacy fence is a board-on-board style, which, you know, prevents any gaps from being seen in it. So, I mean, that would further prevent anybody from even being able to see the lower portion of the building in question. And then, the metal fence that's going around the rest of my yard, I think, is very elegant, and will only enhance the physical appeal to the neighborhood. And then, the bottom, if you look at where the building sits, that is where it currently is, and I'm proposing to move it over to the left with that many feet.
The privacy fence that you see up there, that's what you...
Sorry.
Putting on the Lexington Avenue side, right?
Yes, that's the blue area. If you, if you go back and look at it, that's, or in the yellow arrows up there, right beside of it, that approximate area for where that privacy fence would sit.
That would, that's what you would see from Lexington Avenue.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Young, what's the proposed use of the shed?
It's for just storage mainly. It's a...
Those big skeletons?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so, small, small town. Yeah, I got to have somewhere to put the 15, 12-foot skeletons. That's actually where they are. It's, it holds some of the bigger tools that are in my garage. I have a smaller garage. It's a, I guess it's a technical two-car, but it's a very small two-car garage, and I use it for more of my home needs. I actually, I actually have workout equipment in it. It's very crucial to me and my well-being and my job and everything else. So, I feel like that is a very good use of that space. But that being said, a lot of my other storage space is up in the attic. It's very cumbersome to have to get a lot of these bigger outdoor accessories down and move them, and it's hard physically. But the primary goal is for tool and just accessory storage.
Thank you. It's a very nice shed. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't for residential use.
No, no, no. Yes, so this right here, there's more examples, but the picture on the left is examples of accessory buildings in the area that are, you know, similar in size and shape. What's interesting and learned after the fact is the example in the top-right corner of those examples is actually a single parcel with three buildings on it, one being, well, three additional buildings on it, because it's got the one shed further in the back, and then this right stone building, that's, it's all one address with actual brick house. And beside that stone building is also an additional, looks like storage-type building. So, I mean, that one corner lot... building. So I mean, that one corner lot has three additional structures on it, and it's right up the road from my house.
I think that predates zoning ordinances.
Good, good. Possible. Yep.
Yeah, pretty sure.
And then, just that, the rest of them are kind of either on Lexington Ave. or in the close proximity to my neighborhood, where you can see, like, the wood one, which appears to be more dilapidated than the rest of them. But nonetheless, it is off the road, barely. And then, if you look at the bottom right, that is right beside the church on East Lexington Ave., which I would argue kind of acts as a corner lot because of the visual dynamics of it. And you can see that from the road, but they have it obscured by a fence. And then, on the Kentucky Ave. side diagonal from my house, corner going through the neighborhood, you can see a building that's also in a corner lot that is very visible to the eye. There's also additional ones. There's one building that I believe sets in front of residents down in front of the country club, right next to the very large house that's set back from the road. If you look to the right of that, I believe there is a bluish building that sits in front of the residence. So it's not inconsistent with other buildings that you see in the neighborhood. The right image depicts the current position from Dogwood, the lower picture does. It would still be moved over from where it currently is, and then there would be a fence, like I said, erected along the front. That fence will have a, like a single gate in it that would be visible from that side, but it's going to have a door that can open and close, and then it'll wrap around the, the rest of that. And there'll be a larger gate on the rear right side for access and easement. The top is just an example of how close my neighbor, the neighbor directly in front of me's fence sets off the road. I, I don't know if it's considered a fence or not, because it's the same building material, has their house, and it's, doesn't enclose anything, and it's the entrance of their house, which faces East Lexington. But it is 15 feet from the roadway, which is where my fence will also be. But the, that fence is almost, acts as part of the building itself. And as far as Heather was saying about the setback, when I measured the front corner of my house, you know, it's got the 40-foot setback now, when I measured the front corner of my house from the corner to the road, it was approximately 35. So it's itself outside of the setback. Do you have any more?
I also do want to state, so this all started because we sent a notice violation based on neighbor complaints. So this kind of all started with that. So...
Yeah. I, I saw it, and I was expecting this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I apologize for us getting to this point because it's a state road. I thought I had done my due diligence whenever I called the state and talked to them about setting a privacy fence up years ago, because, you know, it's going to obscure vision. And I wanted to ensure that the safety triangle at the stop sign wouldn't be impeded and all this stuff. So I, I had a conversation with them, and then we also had a conversation recently that said that 15 feet is adequate. And I may even own more than that, but 15 feet is adequate. So it is actually a state road, so I thought I had done my due diligence.
And also to add to that, I did talk to the state and passed, like, made sure that this was acceptable on the state level, too. And so we've got clearance from them as well.
Is there any more images, Heather?
Oh.
Sorry?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so...
I think they have some in their packet, like more images.
Yes, yes. So I've, I've provided a bunch of images. If you all have additional questions, I'll be glad to show them to you. I believe this adequately displays the situation that I'm in. Briefly, the reason it is the way it is is because of that sewer line. There's no safety concerns with where it is placed, even right now. But me moving it back, there's no safety concerns. I've mentioned the erosion issues that could potentially happen. The hardships, you know, weren't created by me. I'm just trying to live in my air plot, you know, the best I can with what I got. I'm asking for the minimum variance necessary to do what I need to do. I'm not asking for more. And I believe that everything within this is in the spirit of zoning code that is currently maintained.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? It was pretty thorough.
I think he was pretty thorough.
Anybody here to speak in support of applicant?
I think both of us are. My name is, my name's Ty Staples. I own 505 Woodland Place, which actually is his big backyard to it. I have absolutely no concerns at all with it. I mean, they've been great neighbors. I will say this, this piece of property, before they moved in, I put up these floors, cleared multiple times. Four, so I'm happy to have them. I have no concerns with it at all. So I just want to make sure, me being the closest, that they, everybody understands there's not any issues.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
My name is Greg Schalhove. I live at 506, which is directly adjacent to Chris. And I also have no problem at all. Very meticulous guy, tries to do everything by the book. Also promise I'll keep him accountable down the line. I also think it's extremely difficult for him to make decisions with the plot that he's got based on all the surrounding circumstances. I think he may be the only person that I can think of that may be in this situation in the radius around our neighborhood. So...
It's a peculiar lot, for sure.
With that in mind, I think, I think he's got something there, so.
Thanks, sir. Being as there's nobody else here, I guess there's nobody to speak in opposition of it. So we will consider the public hearing portion of this closed. Questions for staff or for the applicant? Anybody care to make a motion?
If someone was inclined to make a motion to approve, I think the letter from Mr. Young in your packet provides sound justifications. You might only add that the variance setback would conform with current zoning ordinance standards.
I make a motion to go on what Henry said, to pass.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Ah.
No opposition. Go forth and move your building, sir. That concludes the public hearings on tonight's agenda. There is no other old business pan?
There is none today.
Will there be any new business tonight?
Um, no, I don't think so. I don't think so. I think that was it. I think I'm tired, so.
All right. Well, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.